Okay, so I just went live and I'm gonna share really quick what it looks like. So that's the meeting in YouTube, but we are also live in Granicus. Yeah, so we can, we can proceed.
Wonderful, thank you.
And do we have volume for the livestream?
I'll double check that now.
What's up? Will is checking on that too, just because Granicus has about a 40 second delay.
Yep, we're good.
We're good to go.
Awesome, thanks everyone.
Good luck for your patients.
Thank you. This is Jeff Payne, Chair. We are resuming the continuation of the PG 20-04. Too far, too far. Sorry for the technical difficulties. We are live streaming on Granicus and YouTube. Those links are available on the Planning Commission website from the city of Bend. And we have a completed roll call and we were asking for deliberation amongst the planning commissioners. And perhaps I could start by asking Commissioner Hopper what her thoughts and comments were.
Thanks Chair. I think that I'd like to understand just from some other commissioners about how we want to respond or address if at all the letters we've received. You know, they have some common themes, so I wonder if we could perhaps tackle those common themes and then explore any additional points, but I guess that would be my recommendation if, if, if that's helpful, Chair Payne.
I like that idea.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me too. Did you have something in mind that you'd like to start with, Commissioner Hopper?
Well, sure. If I, if I think about the, the feedback that we received, you know, there's a tremendous amount of feedback about CET and Hawthorne Station. And then there was, if I'm following correctly, and then there was also feedback about the health equity language we discussed briefly yesterday. And then perhaps lastly around Vision Zero. So those were the three that I thought we saw the most public comment on. So I just proposed to take those in order, but defer to others if you have a different strategy.
No, I think that's a, that's a good plan. Yeah, go ahead and start.
Okay, I'm looking at my notes here. So I tried to count the, the feedback that we received, but if I'm looking at the, the written summary from Erin Foot Morgan at, looks like it came through on my phone at five. And then there was some previous conversation. I think it speaks a bit to our role, the city's role, and what sort of dialogue we should have about this piece. And I guess I'd like to hear from others how to, how to navigate a bit because I understand that it's not acceptable for folks to sort of point fingers at each other and say, hey, it was someone else's job. On the other hand, I also know that this, this commission has really limited authority. So we have the authority really granted to us by City Council and in our specific role. So trying to understand a bit how we tackle that, I guess is how I thought we could start.
Yeah, this is, this is Scott. This was kind of a big one that, yeah, it came up a lot. And I was just wondering, and maybe, I don't know if we can be asking questions of the city, but just for some clarification, CET is coming up with their own master plan right now. And it, to me, it just seems, it seems odd that we would put this TSP together while they're still formulating kind of their master plan. And I was wondering how, what is the process? Like, could we move forward with the TSP with a big asterix that says, this portion is, is not completed yet? Because I would hate to see something that we would put in the TSP that would hamstring CET's 2040 master plan. You know, and maybe they would say, oh, well, it would be nice to do this, but we have to follow the, or we have to comply with the Bend TSP. And, you know, and I agree, it shouldn't be a lot of finger pointing. I think it should be a little bit more collaboration. And some of the letters that we got and some of the feedback was that there, maybe that collaboration has come lately, but not necessarily along the whole process of the TSP. And so I guess I was just wondering what the flexibility is with that, with the relationship between the CET master plan and any addendums or changes that would happen with the TSP.
It was my understanding that, that this was being worked out in concert with the, excuse me, with the CET. And it seemed that one of these has to come first. And we're currently in the queue first, but you know, Karen has spent some time, and I believe she sits on that, that other committee and provides input. That's what I call from last night's hearing. But I'm going to comment about hamstringing, you know, a future plan because we've adopted something that might be conflict or not complementary to another plan.
Um, Justice, it's helpful. This is Karen Swirsky. The CET master plan's adoption track is very similar to ours. Will be adopted about the same time as the TSP is adopted in early September. So, and so we have been, we have been really working in lockstep.
And maybe it's a little, maybe a little broader perspective as well when it comes to long range planning and 20 year plans. So if you, if you think of all the entities that do long range plans here in Bend and Deschues County, it's, and I'll just name a few. You have City of Bend, you have Deschues County, they have a comprehensive plan. Bend Parks Metro, Bend Parks Recreation District, they have a 20 year comprehensive plan. The School District has a 20 year comprehensive plan. CET has a comprehensive plan. And the MPO has its own long range plan. And then there are even private utilities that have their own plans. So when we are doing long range plans, you, you almost never get the perfect storm. Everybody's saying, hey, everybody, let's all, let's all do our long range plan together. That actually might even be more difficult. It sounds good, but so, so the point is that absent that perfection, which I think we would all really like, what we do is coordinate in the process. And so, and we rely on, in some cases, we rely on the information that's available and we coordinate. And so the, that is why Karen was coordinating extensively with CET and CET was coordinating extensively with us during our process. And as I've read through CET's plan, it's very apparent that they have done that kind of coordination, not only with the city of Bend in terms of our expected land use projections, City of Redmond, City of Madras, and the region. They're looking at where we are today and where we're going to be in the future. And they're trying to plan their system accordingly. That they're doing their best to plan with all of the different entities in the region as they're all in their own planning processes as well. So just to kind of, as a note, the coordination that took place was extensive throughout our process and theirs. And very difficult to have all of those plans done all at once.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe I didn't mean to get stuck in the weeds in terms of process and timelines of some of these things adding up. And I understand, yeah, there's, there's a lot of different entities that are, that are, they're working, working together and meeting somewhat separate deadlines. I think, I think maybe this conversation, it probably would have been better to start with the, the equity comments that we received because I, I feel like with Hawthorne Station is an example of that, that wording of equity in action or, or the, the different. Right now, you know, and I'm looking at the, looking at public transit in Bend. It's been voted down time and time again by the majority of the community, by all community members, let's say. And it's not necessarily, it's not, it's not necessarily working for those who have been historically underserved. What we've been hearing is that Hawthorne Station is either at or past capacity right now. And it doesn't really seem like there's been a lot of, there isn't a clear, doesn't seem like there's a clear path to success in the future. And maybe that's something that can be clarified or, you know, how do we, we're in a position where it's not working. How do we get to a place where it's working? And when, when the answer is, well, that's not necessarily the city of Bend's jurisdiction. I guess I'm just, I'm just a little confused as to, not necessarily, I don't want to get caught in the, in the process again, but just what's the path forward and how is the TSP reflecting on that?
So Suzanne Johansson here. One of the things, so very difficult to figure out, I think, what to do about Hawthorne Station without having any direct control over it. But a lot of discussion around the idea of the mobility hubs was to have dispersed bus systems throughout the community, which is in the TSP. And that, the idea of that was that it would, instead of every bus having to go through the Hawthorne Station as it does now, whenever you take any bus from any route, you end up at the Hawthorne Station, would be to have buses actually going to these mobility hubs where you would transfer bus or you would get some other mode of transportation to get you to your last mile to your destination. So I think what's missing maybe is just the piece that says what's going to happen with the, with the Hawthorne Station itself. I think the, the plan, and I've not seen the CET plan, so I can't speak to that. But the, but the plan that's in front of us includes planning for improving and increasing accessibility for transit for citizens of Bend. And I, I think it's moving in the right direction. Not having seen the CET plan, it sounded like some of the criticism that we received in the comments were really about the fact that the CET plan did not adequately address the Hawthorne Station as a piece of that. Maybe there's something about a new station that's located in that core area as part of the urban renewal project. I don't know. But I feel like the piece that's missing is really maybe a better calling out of the future for the Hawthorne Station as the mobility hubs reduce the pressure on that facility. Maybe there needs to be some language there.
Well, and I think there was concern also with the timeline of when the mobility hubs would become active and reduce that, that, that pressure on the Hawthorne Station. And if those don't come in for 20 years, then to an, to assist an already kind of at capacity or, or beyond capacity Hawthorne Station, then that, that's a, a big kind of, that's a big problem with the TSP.
So the, all of the mobility hubs are in the short term for the, for the TSP. It's, it's hard because the short term is 10 years. And so that's not going to be tomorrow, but it is in the, in the 10 years. And, and so that would, that's how the funding and project allotment would work for those.
So one, one idea potentially, this is Whitney, that, that I have in, in addressing just kind of the, the oversight of how, or not oversight, but just recognizing how Hawthorne fits within the transit section of policies and actions. I wonder about in, in Policy 31, which is the first item under the Transit Section, if we just add some language that notes that, that the purpose of those mobility hubs is to reduce reliance on or to, you know, add something there. So in coordination with the city's public transportation providers, I might also add in there, and city residents, particularly underserved community members, the city will work to improve the availability of all forms of transportation and transportation technologies by establishing mobility hubs and reducing reliance on or reducing impact on the Hawthorne Station, but really recognizing that those things are connected. I wonder how others feel about just naming Hawthorne within that as kind of, this is the policy path to reduce that reliance on a single transportation center.
I like that approach.
Yeah, if I, if I can jump in for one second, that, I mean, it may be in its deliberations, but that, that almost sounds like a motion to, for a recommendation to pass along to the council, assuming the commission recommends approval of the TSP itself. A motion to make an adjustment to a particular, a particular policy or action along with your recommendation. So as you move through these issues, I think that's maybe a good way to, to try to handle some of these things and maybe package them up so Karen can keep track of them so they can go along with what may be the ultimate recommendation, if that makes sense.
I was desperately trying to write that down, Ian, so thank you. So Whitney, if you can hold that language for when, for later, that would be awesome. Because I'm sure I didn't capture it exactly right.
Okay, yeah.
This is, I just want to say, Whitney, I appreciate your suggestion because as I look at this letter of July 28th, there are a number of things that I also wish were true, right? I wish that the city had a different role right now in transit. I mean, healthcare pays more for transit than the city of Bend. But so many things on this list, I think, do not recognize the relationship between Bend, CET, and COIC. And so I, I like your statement acknowledging the intent. I think it's a good strategy.
All right, are we satisfied with that aspect?
Suzanne, just, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to respond to Scott's about the funding and timing. We spent a lot of time on the committee. We wanted to fund everything the first year of the 20 year plan because we're behind the curve on everything. And it was quite an effort to prioritize and move things into buckets that got us where we wanted to go in a timely manner that we could afford. And even still, adding a lot of big projects made it really complicated for how could you actually get all that done in a short period of time? So Karen mentioned that the short term bucket is 10 years and things will be in there. And yes, they may not happen in the first year, but, but the intention is to attack all of these as soon as possible.
I guess my last comment on this transit section, just in general, is something that really stood out to me and Erin Foot Morgan's comments yesterday is, you know, like, it does, the fact that kind of jurisdiction and responsibility, funding, et cetera, between the city of Bend and the ET seems so kind of out of balance in this area, just feels like transit, which I think many of us know in building a vibrant community, having, you know, an efficient and an efficient public transportation system that serves, you know, a wide variety of people and from different groups and populations, makes, makes a city vibrant. You know, when people want to use public transportation because it is, you know, it's efficient and it's, works well and it's enjoyable, et cetera. You know, I think it just lends to the type of city that I, that I believe the city of Bend and its, its community members want. And so, you know, I know that there's a lot that goes into this transit plan. It just feels like this section of policies is really short or is really kind of limited. And I don't know, I, I don't know that we need to do anything. It just feels important to say.
I think I should provide the CET transit plan for, to you folks to look at as well. And I will do that. So you can see how extensive it is.
We're having a discussion about the result of, the results of the relationship of CET and the city of Bend. And, and maybe, you know, how that, I guess how that relationship can be more effective. It's, I think there's, it's not something, a specific point you can, you can point out in, in the TSP or in, in anything, but the public transportation in Bend, it doesn't seem to have the same prioritization as traffic congestion. You know, if there's areas with traffic congestion, all right, we need to do something about it. Let's, you know, let's have these big solutions. And, and it seems like public transportation has not been as, as addressed. And I think it's, it goes back to that, that equity conversation that we're gonna have.
I guess I lied. I guess I have, I have one other statement to make here. And I think something else that stood out to me was it, the, and again, I've not, I've not studied the CET plan, but the engagement for the city of Bend's TSP seems very, seems to be very robust. There seems to have, to have been a really affirmative efforts to engage with historically underserved communities in the development of this plan. And so I, I don't know if there's an opportunity in the actions or something, but to say, you know, the city of, of Bend, transportation planning, you know, expects this level of engagement with, you know, operators within the city or providers, transportation providers within the city as well. Or facilitates that or something, but it, it seems like with transit being so important and the city making a really strong effort to have clear equity language and equity policy, that extending that to those providers that may be outside of the city of Bend's jurisdiction, but certainly impact the ability to deliver on the, the equity vision for transportation. And Ben seems to be missing here. So I'll think on an action if there's a way that that fits into the action, but it just, it seems to be missing for me.
Suzanne Johansson, I thought there was a recommendation last night, and I'll have to dig through my notes too, that, that a message be sent to CET that there was a piece missing from the plan. And I don't know, it doesn't sound like the, it comes before the Planning Commission and we have any say on the CET plan. So maybe all we can do is send a message to the city staff. But I'll look for that language as well, Whitney, while, while we're doing everything else.
I will also advise you, the CET master plan is out for comment from the public, of which you are members. So.
It looks like the CET master plan, public comments were due two days ago. So.
I apologize, Scott. I thought it was still open.
Lindsay, you had also, sorry Suzanne Johansson, again, you had also asked, the, the two other things we received a lot of comments about were the equity issues and then Vision Zero. And I think that, I think we'll have a good discussion about the equity. But I, but I think the Vision Zero one, I think, so there is an organization Karen explained to us called Vision Zero, the capital V and a capital Z, and we decided that we weren't, we did not want to go down that road. And I think the only thing that's missing is that the Goal Two, Bullet One, it says reduce serious injury and fatalities, and it just needs to be, we need to add to zero. The policies later, the actions actually say zero. It's just that goal does not say zero. So I think we could recommend that we add that zero, two zero. The words would be two, not the number, but the word two, zero at the end of Goal Two, Bullet One. And I think what Ian is saying is we're making a list of recommendations that we're taking to the city council. Is that right, Ian?
Yeah, that's, I mean, the, the Planning Commission has the role and authority here to make a recommendation to city council. And it can include changes or additions or adjustments to the body of work that's presented before you. I just want to make sure that you as a group are, however you get there, if you want to do it informally or through a formal motion process, I don't think it's particularly important as long as the Planning Commission is clear on it and Karen especially is clear on what you've decided in terms of additions to, to package up for council so, so we can accurately deliver what you want delivered to them.
So we don't have to make a motion to add that, that could be something that Planning Commission representatives, is part of the, is part of their presentation to the city council or part of their comments?
I, I think it's both. I think it would, and Karen can weigh in, but I think as part of her staff report to council will probably be useful to be able to outline or list specific recommendations or changes, if any, that the Planning Commission wanted, forwarded. And the Planning Commission reps that are there can, can also highlight those and provide some additional context. So in terms of how you get there, if there are recommendations, you know, for example, you were talking about transit and the relationship between the city and the entity that, that does transit in Bend, how mobility hubs could maybe prioritize as projects. If you're talking about one of those issues and there's obvious consensus among the planning commissioners that, yeah, that's something you want emphasized, council, you, you can just say that. You don't necessarily need to go through a motion process. So, yeah, you can have the discussion any way you want, as long as it's clear. And, and I think, I think maybe moving through these subject areas and then giving Karen a chance to say, okay, what I'm hearing is at least a majority of the person with, well, you know, point A or point B to be emphasized or adjusted. So she can clarify that before you move on to the next topic area is probably a good way to do it.
Good, that makes it easier.
Yeah, Ian, I, I think, I agree. This is Karen. I, I think I'd like an informal sort of, like, I like what Suzanne just said about Vision Zero. If there's an, if everyone agrees, I've got that captured. If you guys are going to provide me with specific wording, we'll need to take a little bit of time to make sure I get the words right.
Well, at this point, maybe I should just ask for an informal poll of the commissioners about the last point that Suzanne made about Goal Two, Bullet One, if we wanted to add the language of reducing to zero. Does everybody agree with that?
I would agree. I also was noting, and I, I think our, the public comments pointed to on page 22, where the actual policy, page 22, policy to first action. I think the other kind of wordsmithing that felt important to commentators was rather than by 2021, the city will develop and adopt an action plan to move the city towards zero, that that towards would be to. So it would be making it more definitive, to zero, traffic dance.
So I'm just going to jump in and say, Suzanne will probably back me up on this. Two, two is impossible. And so, I mean, it's a lofty goal, but it's not possible. No one has ever made zero. So the, the all of discussion was how do we get towards that? It's semantics, so it's, it's up to you guys, but.
I get, I get it. Right, Suzanne here. So that's the action. So the action is toward, but the goals are meant to be aspirational. So the goal can be to zero. That can be the goal. The actions are moving us toward the goal.
Got it.
Perfect. Exactly, Suzanne. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that I think, you know, we should be really clear so that Suzanne and I can carry forward the, the group's intent. It's worth knowing that this will go on the list along with a number of equity items where, you know, if you look at the composition of steering and the composition of council, I would expect they'll need to revisit some of our original debate, and that's fine. But this was certainly not without debate at steering that, you know, I don't think it's our role to sort of try and get in front of that, but it will certainly come up again.
Yep. So then I think that takes us to the equity issue. And was there something?
I'm sorry, Suzanne. I, I think that Jeff wanted you to tell me that you have consensus on your proposal with Vision Zero language?
Yeah, I was trying to take a poll among the commissioners to see how they felt about that.
I'm a yes.
I, I'm for it. It seemed reasonable to me. Yeah. Okay. Carlos, do you have any thoughts here?
Best agree. Support.
Good. Before we go to the equity issue, maybe we could back up one, and Whitney brought up section 31, and it was adding that, that the city would work to establish mobility hubs. I didn't get all that down on paper, but that seemed like something that was pretty reasonable to put in there, maybe important.
I did. I, I took the liberty of writing out what I proposed. So two things would just be in coordination, expand the coordination from just the city public transportation providers to also include community members, including those who have been historically underserved in transit. And then at the very end of the policy, adding on and reducing reliance on Hawthorne Station. So it recognizes that establishing those mobility hubs is directly connected to reducing reliance on the Hawthorne Station.
Hey, Lynn, I'm sorry. Whitney, sorry. I was reading and speaking at the same time. It's never a good idea. I know, would you mind, since we're all electronic here, can you email me that language?
Yes, absolutely.
Fantastic. And then I'll have it exactly, and then I can read it back to everyone.
And that was added on to?
Go ahead.
That was added on to a goal or an action?
It was to policy 31, and I think it was, I think it was actually to the actions in policy 31, wasn't it, Whitney?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For, for what it's worth, that is consistent with this, with C E T's recommendation with respect to transportation and transit and mobility hubs.
Good, good.
And when you look at their preferred option, that is, the language you proposed is consistent.
Yeah.
And I think adds also inclusivity and equity lens to that as well, so.
It does, yeah. I think it's a good change. I just want to make sure I get it right.
Yeah, and, and actually just, I want to go back on what I had just said, Karen, because I was actually editing policy 31.
Okay, all right. So just, oh, there we go. Okay. So policy 31 would say, in coordination with the city's public transit providers, and this is new language, community members, including those have been historically underserved in transit, and the city will work to provide, to improve availability of all forms of transportation and technologies by establishing mobility hubs, which we're already doing, that's kind of repetitive, but that's okay, and reducing reliance on Hawthorne Station. That's.
So only the reducing to have reliance on Hawthorne Station is added, the part about the mobility hubs is actually in the text.
Oh, it is there, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect.
Concur with that.
Yes, I think that helps to address that issue.
Okay, I'm good with that, too. If you disagree, speak up. Then moving on to the equity issues, would somebody like to tackle that?
This is Lindsay, and, and so just to restate, I think the dialogue is around the language that was changed to all community members, and then the request that we replace that with historically underserved, which is really the difference between fairness and equity, as I understand it. And there was a lot of discussion around this general topic. I think I struggle because there are so many, there are so many challenges in the system we currently have, right? We, we elect city councilors in a, in a way that doesn't promote equity. We make exceptions to standards in a way that doesn't promote equity. It seems like we're far overdue on an equity analysis, and so it seems like it would be a really small but meaningful change to honor this feedback. I'll say, just from a steering perspective, I'm concerned about the, the kind of response we're likely to get, but I'll just say, I think it seems like a, a reasonable response to the feedback and a reasonable thing to do, but would love to hear promoters as well, of course, chair.
This is Karen again. Can I just clarify that we're speaking about, what, it was policy 20? Is that, is that the one that, that we're looking to change?
I have some comments throughout the section.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which I'm happy to jump in with.
Yeah, go ahead, Whitney.
With, with my, with my thoughts next. I, I was able to track down the, the previous draft language because I was having a really hard time not having been as close to the process as others on this committee, like Lindsay and Suzanne. So I was able to go back and find the language, and there, there are some pretty substantive changes that have been made, and I, and I don't know from committee to, to the steering committee, to potentially other edits that occurred, but I can, I can go through what I found and kind of just walk us through if everyone is looking at page 28 and 29. And the first thing that I have to add, maybe before that, is something that kept kind of tripping me up is the way in the shaded section of equity that historically underserved populations are defined, kind of in this transportation planning, just kind of, it made me have to keep going back to that definition. And so I think there's an opportunity, kind of halfway through the page where it says, those historically underserved populations include but are not limited to. I would actually recommend rephrasing this just a little differently to say, those populations historically underserved by the transportation system, because that seems to be more in line with the groups that are defined there, as opposed to historically underserved populations as we understand them across kind of sectors in, in health and education and community planning and other ways. It just, it feels kind of out of place to me. So that, that's my first comment, which is my own. And then what I saw in the past iterations was, for example, in policy 20, let me get to policy 20, where it says, the city will engage, will actively engage and support all community members in the city in transportation planning issues, outcomes and decisions. Previously, the language had been much more specific to say, the city will actively engage and support all populations with respect to age, race, disability, gender, income and location in the city in transportation planning issues, outcomes and decisions. And then it, it was more specific in the next section to say, because this next section felt like the sentence ended abruptly, like it was missing, it was missing the, the full, the full subject. The second sentence says, it will actively engage and support those who have been historically underserved, especially in identified areas with concentrations of poverty and/or minority populations in Bend, period. I don't love the language minority populations. I don't think that it's equity or affirming language. And so I would recommend that we actually define, because I think there's a purpose in talking about who some of the, the smaller populations, not necessarily minority, but smaller populations, who are disproportionately impacted by transit would be communities of color, people with disabilities, speakers of languages other than English, for example. And then the actions that were associated with 20, trying to remember if there was a change here.
Sorry, Whitney, I lost you. Where are you now?
I'm on, I'll see 20.
Okay, but you're, you're switching to actions.
Yeah, I'm looking at the actions to see if, what the change was, because I didn't, I didn't highlight those the same way. Oh, yeah, they're quite different. The original actions had said, develop, fund and implement a set of citywide outreach and engagement protocols that build trust and promote community empowerment in transportation and planning. I guess that's not different.
Would it help if I put this, if I was able to show you, put this up on the screen, this language? Okay. So Juan, could you, there you go. My God, you're so fast. Let me make sure.
Whitney, it seems like they're, they're, it seems like different people got together and decided to identify who the transportation, transportation system needs to help out the most, and, and they all came up with their own definition. And there, and I think what you had said about, you know, historically underserved or by, by the transportation system and really identify kind of more exacting language in terms of who needs the, or who has been underserved by that part, by that, by that city service. And coming up with a good definition and then putting him in all those places so that we're not, there's not this asymmetry with, well, this language seems like it's a little bit this way or in this section or whatnot.
Can you guys see that okay? Have I got it, I got it up correctly?
I can't see anything.
Yeah, I can't see anything.
All right, I'm doing it wrong.
Scott, I think that you're, you're also seeing some effects of like, you know, wordsmithing and horse trading or whatever, you know, by committee, which is not particularly pretty. But I do think it's, it's exacerbating some of, of what was already an opportunity for improvement.
Well, it, it's funny, just because on 20, the first sentence, the city will actively engage and support all community members in the city. And then the next second sentence says, it will actively engage and support those who have been historically underserved. I mean, it's, it's, it just seems odd that it's saying, we will, the city will actively engage and support this group and this group.
As though they, I, you know, I don't know what Suzanne's observation is, but I, I felt like throughout, folks did a, you know, staff and, and the consultants did an admirable job, but it felt like we had a bit of an uphill battle on the difference between fairness and equity, and that's just really hard to address in a committee setting.
Yeah, and it seemed like there was a stalemate, and they, and so they just included both sentences.
And I don't know that there's a whole lot of precedent. I think it's fairly new to include these equity themes, so there wasn't language or there wasn't a lot of stuff that we could pull from other places. So it ended up being wording by committee.
And, and review and edit by several other committees.
Exactly.
I wasn't able to share the screen.
On the editing, I'll say that.
Yeah, especially that last go around. Yeah. I will say there is some language in these equity policies that has been vetted by our, our housing folks to make sure that we aren't, that we have the right language in there. They're fairly sensitive about certain kinds of language, not, not necessarily the things that you folks are bringing up tonight, but one of the changes was to change residents to community members. That was important, but the rest of the changes were really steering committee preference.
So Lindsay, one of the things, if we look at, so we were talking about 20, but I think 21 has all the language that you were asking about as well, or maybe you had different changes on 21. So it's a different group of historically underserved, as areas with concentrations of impoverished and/or minority populations. I think that might have just been moved from 20 to 21.
Yeah, but the, the one thing that, when you start getting specific, then you're, you're also omitting others, that, you know, the elderly is not included in this. You know, there's, there's people, I, I feel like there needs to be language that addresses kind of, that addresses everyone who is underserved by the, by the transportation, has been historically underserved by the transportation system or something. Whitney's real good with words. I'm sure she's coming up with something right now.
Well, one of the things I would suggest to you guys is that the definition, which is under that, in that grayed area on page 28, at one time, the intent of the committee was to have the definition live there, and then that all the policies referred to that definition. As we've wordsmithed it and been through various iterations, some of that has been lost. But if you would concentrate your attention there with that language, and then we could probably clean up the other policies to just continue to refer to that definition.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the way to go.
I, I think, Scott, that's how they ended up with all community members, as they continued to define all the different underserved. Basically, everybody is underserved in one area or another.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just point out a couple of things about that kind of introductory section, it does, it does gear, you know, the scope of, of those underserved to those who have been underserved by the transportation system. And to Scott's point, it, it is a non-exhaustive definition. The historically underserved populations include but are not limited to the following non-exclusive list. So I think, to the extent that's kind of a preface or a prelude to what follows, I, again, and I wasn't involved in all the policy drafting back and forth that, that Karen worked with various folks and groups on, but it does, it does tie that deficiency to the transportation system, and it is a non-exhaustive list. And I would, you know, even venture to say that depending on, depending on the particular issue that the city is working through over the next 20 years, who is or has been underserved in relation to that particular issue, it could vary, depending on the nature of the issue. I mean, there could be different communities, different community members that have been, you know, better or less served by the particular issue that we're trying to tackle and solve. So I, when I look at that preface, I, I read it as kind of setting it up that way, but does that answer all the questions or solve all the, the issues that people have? Maybe not, but I, I think that seems to have been. Maybe not, but I think that seems to have been part of the intent.
Yeah, and so I appreciate that, Ian. And so there's kind of two things that I, if that's like our definition and we're going to make the policies broader, which I also just want to say is not what we heard from the commenters, that they want to see that broader. They want to see the specific language carried through is, one, being clear that the historically underserved populations includes a reference to historically underserved populations by the transportation system. And then in that other paragraph where the city is defining transportation equity, for me, it would feel important to add some additional detail to say, you know, what was previously included in Policy 20 that had said, "All populations with respect to age, race, disability, gender, income, and location in the city." So that we're being really specific about, you know, when we're saying, here's what transportation equity is, here are the groups that we're considering when we're, when we're measuring our progress towards that.
Would we add that to the grayed out box there in that last paragraph? Whitney, is that where?
Yeah, that's where I would, yeah, I would, I would see that the city defines transportation equity as being achieved when everyone.
And then define it there after everyone.
Where everyone, or where it says, maybe rather than everyone, but say, "Where all populations with respect to age, race, disability, gender, income, and location in the city have access to safe, comfortable, affordable, and reliable transportation choices to meet their la 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 la."
Whitney, is that the language that was deleted? I'm just, rather than me trying to write it, I'll just capture what was deleted.
It was deleted from, from Policy 20.
Okay.
No, I like that, I like that language. Because it's funny, because when you, a lot of times with this equity, you imagine someone who might be, you know, kind of down on their luck, but when you talk about age, it might just be children not being able to bike anywhere.
Or to cross their street.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that having that, I think what you had said, or what had actually been, I guess, previously written in there, I think that should be put back in.
Yeah, I, I'm also, I guess, as we think about wordsmithing these other policy or the policies in this section and making them kind of less specific. I, I feel sensitive about all communities just because within our national rhetoric at the moment, all communities is a way to paint over historically underserved communities. And so I cannot recommend that the all, all community members language stand. In fact, I think we, we do need to, if we remain with that language for all community members, that we need to qualify that with, with a focus on historically underserved communities or, you know, something else that doesn't require our reader 20 years in the future to continue to refer to that grayed out box.
Yeah, prioritizing or emphasizing.
Historically underserved.
So one thing that we could, well, I'm wordsmithing here for you, but if the grayed out, never mind. I, we could just repeat the definition in every single one of the policies. I think that's what the committee was trying to get away from. But that's one way to be ultra-clear.
I mean, I think, for example, the way that it is incorporated in Policy 19 is done in accordance with kind of what I was advocating for to say, "The city will develop and support programs and projects, both capital and maintenance, that reduce transportation-related disparities faced by populations that have historically had significant unmet transportation needs or who have experienced disproportionately negative impacts." Like, I think that's the right way to do it, to say, certainly, all of these policies are meant to increase or support, you know, the development of transportation for all of Bend, right? But without naming specifically how for underserved communities, it gets kind of swept aside or not considered. So to the extent that the language is included that way, but not just all community members, analyze crash and fatality data to determine where rates are higher in order to ensure that the annual CIP process includes projects that will improve safety outcomes and processes for all community members. I think that, you know, like adding that to say, with a priority or with a focus on outcomes for historically underserved communities, something like that is necessary from my perspective.
So, Whitney, are you suggesting that we would rewrite the policies all 19 or 20 through 23 to use that same language that's in 19?
I think that 19 and 21 do that.
Okay, so it would be, it's 22 and 23? 22 is actually neutral, so it's 20?
Just 20.
Just 20, okay.
Yeah. I think that was where the majority of our comments from community members came from, is to say, there's been substantial change in the language for that. And I agree, there's still a lot of name dropping in there.
So if I'm understanding you, then the recommendation is to, really, to take all community members reference, to go back to the original language in, in Policy 20. Is that where we've settled?
I think, I think that's what we heard from community members. They felt very, very clear and very strong that that language was very intentional.
Yeah, okay.
I think I'm good with that. Yeah.
Okay, so there were a number of suggestions, but really what we have settled on is that we would just go back, and I can read you the old language.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Hang on a second. I'm going to figure out which document it is on my desktop. Okay, so the old language would say, "The city will actively engage and support all community members with respect to age, race, disability, gender, income, or location in the city transportation planning issues, outcomes, and decisions." "It will actively engage and support those who have been historically underserved, especially in identified areas with concentration of poverty and/or minority populations." Now, Whitney, you said you didn't like the word minority populations. So would we change that?
I don't, I don't like it because I think it's not humanizing.
What would you change it to?
Do we need that sentence?
No, we actually don't. So, so, I mean, I was just thinking that maybe the way it just says is, for example, those living in areas where median income is less than the average. I'm sorry, wait, 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 nope, nope, nope. I'm sorry, I did that wrong.
We're saying, we're saying we actively engage and support, and then we list, and then we say we actively engage and support, and then another list. I think we just have one sentence. I don't understand the point of.
I.
Can I propose something? And this is, this is mainly a question for Whitney. I don't know if this accomplishes your intent, but I'm going to, I'm going to read something and just, just as an idea for, see if it works. Okay, so I'm looking at Policy 20 as the current version. And what if it said, "City will actively engage and support all community members in the city in transportation planning issues, outcomes, and decisions," comma, "with an emphasis on actively engaging and supporting those who have been historically underserved." Does that, does that get there? Or does that still leave all community members in in a problematic way?
No, I think, Ian, that's a good example of what I had said previously, that if, if all community members is named, then qualifying it with like affirmatively including historically underserved groups. The one, Karen, from the original language that was there, this was the language that I had said could move up into that grayed out definition to be very clear about in that second paragraph, what transportation equity would be.
So you like Ian's suggestion? Are you supportive of that? Okay, Ian, could you email me that, please?
Yes, I will, I will email you that. And what it does is it, again, to be clear, leaves the phrase "community members" in, but adds, it is intended to be inclusive and add emphasis towards those who have been underserved.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll email you, Karen, that version as I try to put it together just now.
Okay, so one, one last thing for clarification from you folks, which is, I'm unclear about whether we are or not changing the definition. So just to remember, the definition is non-regulatory, but it does set up the policies. So do you want to change any?
Grayed out box, Karen?
Yes.
Since I've already, since I've already been down this, my, my recommendation would be two. In the first, in the first paragraph, about halfway down, where it says, "Those historically underserved populations," I would edit that to say, "Those populations historically underserved by the transportation system."
Okay.
Include, but are not limited to. And the second thing is, "The city defines transportation equity as being achieved when," I would, to just be kind of similar in the other language that's been used, "achieved when all community members with respect to age, race, disability, gender, income, and location in the city have access to safe, comfortable, affordable, reliable, et cetera." Those would be my, my two recommendations.
I'm going to have to ask you to send those to me as well, if you don't.
Gladly.
Okay.
So then, throughout the rest of this, if you say historically underserved populations, it's referring back to that original, and that way it doesn't get
Yeah.
Okay, too muddled, right?
Yeah, so that, we would make two changes to the equity section. We would make Whitney's suggested changes to the introductory paragraphs, and we would make Ian's suggested change to Policy 20. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
That sounds like.
Were there any, sorry, this is Lindsay. Were there any other equity items raised in any of the public feedback that we should address? Or have we, have we fairly captured what we've received? I was just going through emails, but I wanted to check.
There was one additional request from actually a CTEC member that we look at adding an equity policy into funding policies. So we don't have anything specifically addressing equity and funding. I think the committee's response to that discussion was, we felt like, they felt like it was covered. But he did make that comment again to you guys. It's in Sid Snyder's first letter to you, which you got yesterday. Thank you, Whitney.
You're welcome, thank you. I don't think I.
I didn't get that one.
I don't think I got Sid's email.
I don't think I did either.
Well, it would have been, it would have been in the e-plans. Yeah, I can read it to you. It might take me a second to get to it, but.
Karen, in terms of that feedback, does, does the potential connection to the transportation equity program, but, you know, potentially address the concern that was raised?
That was, that was the, this was the discussion we had at CTEC, and that was CTEC's conclusion. But, but it's something that Sid feels passionately about, and so he brought it up again.
Oh, I see, okay.
So Policy 51 currently says, "The city's transportation funding plan will ensure that all transportation system users pay a fair and equitable share for transportation, development, operations, and maintenance." And, and he feels like that's a little bit sloppy language and that fair and equity are often not the same thing. They often contradict each other. So his, yeah, his letter is in e-plan, it was one that you got yesterday. So he has some, let's see, did he have suggested language? So his concern is that some funding mechanisms are less equitable than others because they're more, you know, they're retroactive, regressive. Sorry, it's the right word there. So he was suggesting that we have a new policy in the equity section or additional policy under, that expands Policy 19 or something. So he has this, yeah, he just would like to see it addressed. That was the other, other than changing the Policy 20 language, that was the only other equity comment that we got.
I don't really have a position on that.
I mean, I, I agree that fair and equitable are now the same thing, right? I think that steering and perhaps counsel are going to struggle with that and continue to struggle with that. I think we could wordsmith it a bit if there was sort of the will of the group. I mean, it's my hope that the equity program will do the kind of analysis necessary, and then the city will have the discipline to honor that in a number of funding choices. But that's a lot of ifs and hopes.
Lindsay, just looking at Policy 51, are there a few, a few words top of mind for you that we could add around the pay a fair and equitable share that, that you think, based on your proximity to discussions, could kind of clarify the intention of those ifs and buts?
Well, it's a good question to ask, thank you. I, I think I just, I don't know. It's a little bit of a struggle from watching steering and sort of, sort of what hat am I wearing? Where, but wearing a planning commission hat, I would remove fair and, and I would say inequitable share. Or I would try and tie it to some other, you know, reference the equity program. That, but I think the most expedient way would be to say, pay an equitable share and leave it at that. I don't know how that sits with others or with you as well, Whitney.
Yeah, I think just an equitable share, that it's clear and it's.
So basically delete the word fair?
Yeah, would pay an equitable share.
I think that's clean.
Yeah.
In service of the equity value.
Okay, I got, that's easy.
Answer all.
The answer all along was for planning to do the wordsmithing.
I don't know.
Suzanne knows that, my share.
Kidding, kidding.
What else do we need to look at? Somebody have anything?
I still have the issue about crosswalks, and I sent my comments to Karen. My request of the planning commission is, so this came up because of various developments where I felt like we needed to include a crosswalk in the development proposals, and Colin said we didn't have language in the plan to include crosswalks as part of the plan approval process. So he said that the appropriate thing to do was to have, make sure that there was language in the comprehensive plan, and then in the policies that would require crosswalks. There's a lot of language in the plan now, but I'm not sure if it's sufficient. Because Colin is out of town, my request is that we ask Colin to review the language that's in there and make sure, if he thinks it's sufficient, then we don't need to change anything. But if he thinks that the language needs to be changed, then I would like it to be updated to ensure that we have the language we need to address crosswalks in future development.
Commissioner Johansson, I'm wondering if you could, I think that's clear and helpful. I'm wondering if, to what end? Just so you're, in your recommendation, if that moves forward, then to what end, so that Colin is, instead of referencing a conversation, or a prior conversation, maybe it's, what, what are you hoping to achieve by Colin's review? And then I think that would be clear, that would be clear.
So I need Colin to tell us whether there is language in there that would allow us to the city when reviewing development plans. And it came up during the core area, it came up during the Discovery West, I'm sure it'll come up during all of the expansion areas, is just to include crosswalks in that as part of the transportation. So we have sidewalks, we have bike lanes, we have motor vehicle lanes, but we don't have crosswalks. So if our goal is to encourage people to get around our community by means other than cars, being able to cross, particularly the arterial and collector system, where even though the state law says that every intersection is a crosswalk, that doesn't mean it's safe for people to cross. And if people don't feel safe, then they're going to use a different mode of transportation. So the request for Colin was just to make sure that there was sufficient language in the plan, the way that it is presented, to allow for the inclusion of crosswalks in the analysis of the traffic, transportation infrastructure that would need to be completed as part of the development.
As a requirement.
Yeah, my suggestion to Suzanne, Brian, we talked about this earlier, was that she bring this up and have you guys agree that we would, I would have this conversation with Colin when he gets back from vacation, so that's an if. If he feels the, I had had this language covered a while ago, but the language has evolved since then. So if it's not sufficient in his estimation, that you would give me the leeway to add in some language before it goes to council. So that's the kind of if then discussion.
And I, I wonder, just because I'm looking at the policies, this is Whitney, pointing to policy 41, which talks about creating a pedestrian master plan. One of the actions says amend the bend development code and standard, and standards and specifications, specifications for sidewalk construction. And so, you know, maybe, maybe that's one of those triggering actions that, you know, that's, if it's not included, Suzanne, in master planning, in that section of the code that it, that it is, and so it doesn't necessarily need to be explicit within our transportation system plan if it's explicit in our development code.
I just want to make sure that, so typically the way things, it works, Whitney, is that there's a mention in the TSP and the development code implements it. So I want to make sure that he feels that we have the sufficient policy language in here to allow him to implement it through the development code. And I think we do, but I want to make sure. And I want permission from you guys to add some language if, if he says that I need to.
There are multiple sections, there are multiple sections where it gets addressed, but for instance, there's the comp plan, chapter seven goal says crosswalks, but it only says crosswalks if there is a two-lane arterial or collector as opposed to a three-lane arterial or collector. So it's very specific, and I don't want language in the comp plan to keep us from being able to get a crosswalk across a three-lane arterial or collector, for instance. So there's just a lot of that. It's, I, I pulled them all out and sent all the places that I found those references to Karen to ask him if any of, if, I just want to make sure we have the ability to get people across the street, that's all.
I would support that, and since you're going to present this to council, Suzanne, is that something that you can kind of make sure happens? You know, looking at current language, you're speaking with Colin?
Yeah, my hope is Karen and Colin are going to get together and decide that the language is sufficient and everything is good. And they're going to email me and say it's all good. I just want to make sure if it's not good, that we look at it before we adopt it and create a barrier that we didn't intend for crosswalks, that's all. So I'm comfortable, if it, if it needs to be brought up to the council when we make our presentation, I'm happy to do that. I've been there to talk about crosswalks a long time ago.
Suzanne's theme song when she was on CTEC was "Money for Maintenance and Crosswalks."
Simple. Consistent.
Are we, are we good with that group to allow Karen to kind of create some language and be monitored by Suzanne and Colin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. You're on. Are there any other issues or topics we need to cover here?
I just had one, let me find my notes. I just, it was going back to 31, the transit. And Whitney had proposed the, about underserved members with the city will work to improve the availability of all forms of transportation. I was wondering if we could just put in to improve and prioritize the availability of all forms of transportation. You know, again, just, just trying to put that on the forefront of every discussion that public transit. You know, I was looking at the projections, and in 20 years, we're supposed to have about a 60-something percent population growth. It just seems like with that much population growth, and even if we had the, even if the hubs were built tomorrow, I, I don't think that public transportation would be sufficient to accommodate that. So it's, it's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to emphasize having public transportation being just either moved along faster or being more prioritized.
So let me make sure I understand you, Scott. This is policy 31.
Yes.
Right? Okay, and so it would say, in coordination with city public transportation providers, community members, including those who have been historically underserved in transit, the city will work to prioritize and improve.
Improve and prioritize.
Okay. What do others think about that?
I don't have a problem with it. I don't know how important that is to make that change.
I, I, I think that it's important in just, again, providing kind of a forward motion towards multiple points of mobility instead of just a single, a single transit terminal. Feels reflective of, of comments that we've received.
Okay.
Karen, are there any objections? This is Lindsay.
Yes. Sorry, Suzanne.
So Karen, it sounds like that we're, we're good with it.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott.
Can I ask one, one question before you move forward? And this is mainly a question for, for Karen, I think. If the planning commission moved to forward this on to the city council, and I'm not going to read the suggested motion language, but if it included something like, with all of the recommendations discussed and approved tonight, Karen, would that be enough for you in terms of how you've been able to keep track of things?
I, I believe so. I do think we need to, do we need Ian to talk about the, the other recommended changes that we sent? Are those, is that not something that they need to discuss?
Do you mean the, the errata sheets?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think, so in case any of you haven't had a chance to read that, that's something Karen sent along that she mentioned last night, just kind of a running, a running roster of, I'll call them corrections and adjustments. I mean, some of them are changes in response to input, but they're fairly minor. And the motion language, for the recommended motion language includes the phrase, allowing for minor corrections or clarifications from staff. So I would say that what Karen has provided to you in terms of that running tally fits within that. So unless you want to discuss those things particularly, I don't think you have to.
So I can quickly go down the list of one, two, three, four, five, six things that you guys have asked for, to make sure that everyone is, so that when you make your motion, you can just sort of refer to those by, by reference? Is that working, Ian?
Yes, it works.
Okay. So I have a change to a vision zero goal, which would be to add zero to the end of goal two, bullet one. And that's to make it match the policy, which I think is good. On policy 31, we changed the language to add community members, including those who have been historically underserved in transit, improve and prioritize, and then adding and reducing reliance on Hawthorne Station. In the introduction to equity, we added the, the line, those populations historically underserved by the transportation system include blah, blah, blah. And then the last paragraph actually lists those, all community members with respect to age, disability, race, gender, income, and location. On policy 20, you've asked to revert to the old language. Policy 51 will change from, will delete the word fair, and then we'll do, I will do my crosswalk homework. Those were the items that I got. Did I miss anything?
The, the only edit to that, Karen, is policy 20 will revert to the original language with
Just the first sentence.
But with the language that Ian had sent in an email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not quite a reversion of the old language, it's a little bit of a, a bridge, maybe.
Okay, now I've confused myself. I still have that in email. I thought I, I thought I put it up here. Okay, I got it. I would say Ian's language, but we decided to just use the first sentence. We didn't need the second sentence. Okay, got it. All right.
Ian and Chair, is there a process between now and the council hearing to make sure that all of these words are just right? So I'm wondering, the two commissioners that are going to take this forward, is that, is there a process that the staff can work with the two commissioners to make sure that the spirit, that the, that the actual reflecting this conversation?
Yeah, because words do matter, so I think that's important. I think if, if the planning commission wanted to give the, the green light to Commissioners Hopper and Johansson to work with staff in interim between now and the public hearing at council to make sure that's exactly right, I think that would be appropriate. And then we can make that happen as we have time between now and then.
And Karen, I, I think you forgot Commissioner Johansson's sidewalks.
No, she got it. She got it. Crosswalk was the last thing she said she's going to do her homework on crosswalks.
They're not going to let that go, I know that, but.
I'm not.
Well, I, I would be comfortable in kind of delegating, you know, final read between Commissioner Hopper and Johansson before we go to the city council.
Karen, your mute's on.
Sorry, thank you. I will do that. Ian, would you please send me your language again? I don't know what I did with it.
I, I will send it to you again.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Usually people wait at least an hour to delete my emails, Karen. It's not so automatic.
No, you know, the, the problem that I have is I don't delete anything. I'm so hyper organized that I can't find things. I put them in special places and then they're gone.
Hey, this is Lindsay. So we should be expecting a follow-up from you, Karen, offline in a, in a couple of days, or, or just make sure we're looking for an email?
Oh, yeah, and it will be, it will be fairly quickly. Yes.
Understood. Happy to do that.
Thank you. And so it's, it's Whitney, it's Lindsay, and Suzanne. Those are the, and the two folks that I've been able to work with, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's great, Suzanne, because that means I can follow up with you on the crosswalk stuff, and we can figure out if we got it right.
Excellent.
Well, it seems to me like we've covered any, all the issues that were on the table. Because are there, is there anything else before we move on?
Yeah, I, I just had one, and this is, I, I think Brian, yesterday when we were talking about road classifications and, and master plans. And I guess, I guess I was a little confused as to, so when someone, when master plans come before planning commission and city council or whatnot, and they have traffic engineers that, that kind of figure out some of the road, road classifications. And so we have some master plans that have been approved, and they're, they're not quite, you know, obviously designed, or, you know, they're not out for permit yet, and they're probably not breaking ground. And I was just wondering about the process of the TSP coming in and, and reclassifying the road. And I was just confused as to how that worked. And you had said that the, that legally the master plan wouldn't, I guess, would, they wouldn't officially have the road classifications under their kind of umbrella? I, I, I guess I just wanted a little clarification on that.
Yeah, and I apologize if I confused anyone. I, my comments were in response to Joe Bestman's testimony. His verbal testimony where he, I believe at the conclusion after pointing out some, he had some suggestions with respect to road classification. Said, his, his point was to leave the road classifications issue up to the master planning process that takes place later on. And so my, my response was saying, no, the TSP is designed to serve the area that's in our urban growth boundary, which includes the UGB expansion areas, and therefore we'd have roads with road classifications that serve those areas. And I think during the, during the master planning process, it's customary to move those. So, you know, the, the TSP alignments are rough alignments, of course. So the actual, I think the important part is the connection, and, and then the classification as well. So, you know, the suggestion is to have these road classifications. And then during the master planning process, the developer would typically say, okay, that I have a collector or a major or a minor arterial, and this is what I'm expected to, to build, and this is what serves my site. And I think there's more flexibility with respect to the cross-section. And I think there's more flexibility with respect to the cross-section, because there are a variety of ways to, to provide that roadway. It's not just a one size fits all in bend. So I, I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner Winters, or just further confuses the issue.
Yeah, I was just wondering, was there, were there master plans that were put forth and, and then, and then those roads that were in there were, or put to a higher classification so that there's less, I guess, development square footage? Is that, is that what the?
No.
That, it's hard to say what particular motivation may be. The, the DSL property is currently being examined for development feasibility. So that's one area outside of the, the current city limits, a UGB expansion area that is, it would be master planned. And, and so a change to the TSP, I think to answer your previous question, if you, if the city adopts this TSP, then any master plan that would come in after that fact, and after that adoption, that would then have to use the new TSP road classification, kind of a goalpost standard in that case. So I think this would have, this could potentially affect, I don't think it's going to affect any applications that are in process right now, not that I'm aware of. Petrosa is finished, and I'm not aware of any other movements in the North End or in DSL or in the Thum area. And then the, the Southeast Area Plan, some of the, the concepts and road alignments that were developed through the TS, through that process were fed into the TSP. So it reflects basically a series of new road alignments that were developed through that process. I don't think you'll be in any trouble there.
Okay.
Okay. We'll ask again, are there any other comments that we need to bring up, any other thoughts here?
From my perspective, yep.
Okay. Well, at this point, it seems appropriate then that we conclude deliberations and call for a motion.
Chair, Suzanne Johansson, I would recommend that the planning commission recommends the city council adopt an ordinance. Is that the right motion?
So I, I mean, there, there are different ways, different ways to do it. There is suggestive motion language. It's, it's number three on the agenda, and because this is something with multiple parts, there's probably a good reason to have some specificity and track as best we can the recommended motion language, maybe with an addition at the end along the lines of, for example, as well as the suggested recommendations discussed with staff tonight. That would capture everything that Karen has recorded. So I don't know if somebody has that who can make the motion that might, or has that handy, that might be best.
I, I do, I can, or Suzanne, you want to go for it?
So I wrote, I'm just trying to clarify, Ian, I'm looking at this before the planning commission, and at the end is a recommendation, is that the motion? Or was there a motion someplace else and I'm in the wrong place?
Well.
Third line down.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Okay, 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 I got it, okay. All right. So I move to recommend that the city council approve the amendments to the transportation system plan and appendices, including amendments to the comprehensive plans preface and chapters three, five, seven, and 11, as well as the changes that were made to Goal Two, Policy 31, the introduction to the equity section, Policy 20, Policy 51, and the discussion of crosswalks. And also allow for minor corrections or clarifications from staff.
Okay.
I would, I would second. This is Whitney, Sander.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, I believe the motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we approved the amendments last night, and unless the other commissioners have something else to bring up that we didn't last night, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, Suzanne Johansson, I would just like to send another shout out to Karen Swersky for all of the effort for this. It has been, I mean, it's been huge for us going through this, but it's nothing compared to what Karen had to do to supply us with what we needed, meeting after meeting, year after year. So thank you, Karen.
Well, thank you, Suzanne.
You're here.
Thank you, guys, that's nice.
Yeah, you, you and Lindsay and Karen, this is a yeoman's job, it's a huge amount of work. Very impressive.
Well, we've had a lot of excellent help. It's been a team effort. It's not just me. They just, I'm the one who yells the most.
Necessary, though.
Yeah. But thank you, guys, for your work.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I believe we adjourn.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. We adjourn.
Thank you. So yeah.
Thanks.
Ellen, Juan, are we going to be good with doing whatever we need to finalize?
I'm stopping the, I think you should be able to finalize, and I'm stopping the recording and live streaming.